And good evening, West Orange. And again, welcome to our West Orange Board of Education virtual meeting on this Monday, March 8th. And a good evening to Dr. Cascon and my fellow board members and Ms. Flowers. Would you please do the honors for us?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Roll call. Mrs. Huerta?
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tunncliff?
Here.
President Triggs Scales?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting, please take notice that the adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner, that a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 8th and February 25th, 2021. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education. Thank you. And please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Flowers. And now, consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of February 22nd. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Tunncliff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Flowers, please.
Okay, Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunncliff?
Yes.
President Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All righty, our student liaisons are not with us this evening, so we're going to just move on to item eight here, which is our superintendent's report. So Dr. Cascon, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, President Triggs Scales, and good evening, board members and members of the community. In attendance tonight, we appreciate you being here. I'd like to just start off by acknowledging that today is International Women's Day during our Women's History Month, so we honor all the fine women in our, in our, in our community and in our lives, the women on our board. We have four of our five board members are women, so we thank them for their service on the board and our business administrator, Ms. Flowers, and acknowledge just how important women are to our society in so many ways, and so we honor them today and throughout this month. Just moving into the report today, I do have a follow-up report on, on the budget, after which I'll offer some additional thoughts relative to school reopening. So when we originally presented the preliminary budget information on February 22nd, at that time, we were not in receipt of our state aid numbers, so it was largely a theoretical budget. We were basing our calculations on either a restoration of the $1.5 million in state aid, which was taken back from us last August, or completely flat funding, as that was kind of the word coming out of Trenton at that time. Under those calculations and when considering other increases in costs, particularly in the areas of benefits and transportation, a 2% increase in the tax levy or going to cap would have left the district with a deficit of $5.2 million, and coming in at a 0% budget with no additional tax levy would have left the district with an $8.8 million deficit. On February 25th, we received our state aid numbers, and they were much better than we had thought. Not only did the state restore the $1.5 million we lost last year, but they held to their word in continuing their equalization aid payments to the tune of $4.7 million, realizing a total of $5.7 million in state aid. Now, it is important to realize that this budget did or does contain some increases in addition to those expenses mentioned before, namely, for, that is, the number four special education teachers to, amongst other initiatives, create a behaviorally disabled class at the middle school for students aging up from our elementary BD program. It also includes middle school interventionists to address what we understand will be, you know, perhaps learning loss and gaps which have emerged over the course of the pandemic. There was one additional elementary teacher due to increased class size at Hazel School, and an occupational therapist, which is currently being staffed by a third-party vendor, as well as $157,000 in security upgrades to align with Alyssa's Law, and that's just to name a number. Now, part of those security updates will be funded out of ongoing COPS grant money, which we received a couple of years ago, but those are just examples of additional expenses above and beyond the increase in sort of our fixed costs. On the reduction side, the budget was, we, we cut $3,101,998 from the operating budget, and this will include 18 positions. This included a 20% reduction in all discretionary line items, and a number of expenses were taken out of the local budget since we received our allocation for the SR2 grant, namely, capital construction projects, and we were able to actually, this time around, unlike SR1, utilize that money for HVAC remediations, which will actually be extremely helpful, not only to automate the remaining UNIVENT systems, but also to install new mechanical ventilation in all 55 spaces in the district, both classrooms and offices presently without mechanical ventilation. So under this new state aid, a 2% increase to the budget would have represented a $1.4 million deficit. The 1.5% budget, which is what the administration has proposed to the board, would result, did result in $2.1 million in cuts. A 0% budget would have resulted in $4.2 million in cuts. So at this juncture, to cut an additional $2 million from the budget to bring it to a 0% budget would amount to approximately 30 positions, which would be exclusively instructional. We've trimmed all the, all other, you know, for lack of a better word, fat, and we are down to instruction at this point in time. This would impact delivery of intervention, and remedial services would increase class size in most cases above or well above 25, and result in loss of some academic program, programming. Now, in previous years prior to the budget legislation whereby an annual, were capped, an annual school budget would go out to the public for a vote, at which time the will of the people would be exercised, and we would know definitively if the voting populace agreed with the budget and supported the budget, notwithstanding an increase or a lack of increase. Now, in this area of capped budgets, it's the superintendent and ultimately the Board of Education's role to predict what the community would want and support, and in this particular case, I and the administration have recommended a 1.5% increase to the board. Because ultimately, it is my position and that of the administration that this community, whether it's those individuals with children currently in the schools, or those individuals who are homeowners, who do not have children in the school, but who have a critical interest in the quality of the school system and its corresponding relationship to property value, would rather sustain an additional $5 a month increase in taxes, which is the comparative between 1.5% and 0%, than see an outstanding and fine, fine school district decimated by additional cuts. Further, if there were ever a time when children will need a full suite of instruction and academic services, it would be now during this pandemic. One final piece is that if we do indeed have to go to side-by-side school experiences next year with a virtual-only and onsite-only cohort, this would certainly not be feasible to do with decreased staff capacity. For the public's edification, where we are in the process now is the board, as of Friday, is in receipt of the budget binders, which they have been reviewing. This week, Ms. Flowers and I will be setting up mini-work sessions with groups of two board members at a time, and we will answer questions and receive feedback and make any necessary refinements to the budget, proposed budget, in advance of the presentation at the March 18th public budget work session. So that is just a kind of a, A, an update on where we've come in now with state aid numbers, and where, where the budget's gone since then, as well as our process. And with that, before I advance to school reopening, I would turn it back over to President Triggs Scales, and if there were any insights or questions that the board might have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Cascon. I know that we will be having an opportunity to ask deeper level questions, but perhaps the board does have some general questions right now, so we'll just go through. Ms. Huerta?
Thank you. Thank you, President Triggs Scales. I just have kind of one question about the capital projects that you mentioned. Do we have an idea of, I know we had initially said that we paused all of those capital projects, so do we have any idea of which projects will be addressed first, or, you know, which ones have priority?
Yeah, so we, you know, we actually, we have continued actually to move forward with capital improvement projects this year, and in fact, the, the, the fact that the Buildings and Grounds Department has been, had been in the buildings since April, in the absence of staff, have been able to get quite a bit done. I know that they're beginning a, the retaining wall project, not the big retaining wall project at Washington School, because that's a greater expense, but the, but they're replacing the retaining wall that runs on the front side of Washington School. So that's an example of a capital project that's continued to move forward. Now, in terms of the list of capital projects that would be included in that, and it's approximately $300,000, we do have that, and that will be included in the, the budget presentation. Ms. Flowers, do you, do you have, do you have any insight into that? Have you, have you received that information from Mr. Semino, the cap, the proposed capital improvement projects?
He was going to revisit his list, but he was looking at getting the steam units updated, the upgrades there, but I'll get the details for you, and we'll provide it to the board members.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger.
Just in advance of the meetings this week, just a few items that we could, if we don't have them already, but if we could get these. I know we just opened up kindergarten registration, so just curious what those numbers are looking like, and I'm sure this was considered, but just in advance of planning and looking at this, if we could get the number of students in each class across all the schools, so grade-wise, elementary levels. And then at West Orange High School, I know we offer a lot of courses, and I'm just wondering if some of those are now irrelevant with some of the newer courses that we provided, and so I'm just looking at what the enrollment is looking like in those courses, just in terms of if we were to have to make additional cuts, are there some antiquated courses that maybe are no longer needed because we've advanced them to newer ones that are of more interest to our student population? So if we could get that in advance of, of the meetings this week, that'd be great.
Sure, we can do that. Now, just a quick clarification on the enrollment piece. Are, are you looking for, Mrs. Merklinger, just overall enrollment, or are you looking for enrollment by, by grade in each school? Is that right? Is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, just to kind of take, take a look at.
Absolutely.
And to your point that you mentioned, if we are going to be moving to, and you know, I'll wait to hear from, about the school reopening plan, but if we are looking to go and open in September with kind of this dual classroom, I'll say, with a teacher for specific, specifically for virtual, and then a teacher in the classroom, just how would is that staffing going to look, and what would we potentially need based on enrollment? So just to kind of get an idea of what, what that could impact on staffing needs.
Sure, and I, and no problem, and I would just, just kind of follow up just for the public certification, as they wouldn't necessarily be privy this week to those conversations, but would on the 18th, is that, you should know, members of the board, that, you know, I did ask the administration to, particularly on the elementary level, to really look at class size and look for, for places, you know, schools and grades where we could realize efficiencies. And, you know, I think the, you know, last year, we were able actually to save, I believe, four or five staff lines through that, so we're, you know, we don't have a lot of, we don't, we had wiggle room last year, which was really enabled us to not have to actually cut a lot of people, we just didn't replace retired teachers last year, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room, but certainly, I think, for the board's edification, to know that you've, you've seen the numbers and you concur, I think that's, 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 that's absolutely a very reasonable ask, and we'll also get you the current registration numbers for, for kindergarten, and we can get you a master, a master, you know, we are, at this point, I'll have to check in with the high school where they are in the master scheduling process, they should be just about done with that and have a stroke count, you know, for their core sections, so we'll be able to have that info for you.
Yeah, and if we could just look at the class sizes at the middle schools as well, so what are we looking at in terms of number of students in each of the classes at Edison, Roosevelt, and Liberty?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. And Vice President Tunncliff?
Okay, thank you. Just to piggyback onto what Ms. Merklinger said, do we know how much enrollment has increased this year? Have we had a lot of, I know there's been a boom in the real estate market in West Orange, and I was just curious how that's impacting us this year, and, you know, do we expect that to continue, and are we, how are we factoring that in?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it's a good question, and we can, we can look at our enrollment numbers. I can tell you that we've, we've certainly balanced out the approximately 130 students who have transferred out for one reason or another, and I'm going to kind of address that piece in my reopening update, but that's certainly been amply balanced out by our enrollment. I know in particular, we're seeing a large influx of students at Hazel School in particular. In fact, we've had to overflow a number of students that have come at the Hazel School to Gregory School, because the classes at Hazel School have been, have been overcap, and that overflowing happens, you know, pretty, pretty regularly in some of our schools. So our enrollment has, has remained relatively stable or even with losses and gains, but we can, we can get that information and give you exact information for our meetings this week.
Okay, thank you. And I did just want to make a comment, because I think it's great that we're able to add some support to the middle school classes with the ELL. I think it's super important to help, you know, our students who, especially if we have students coming in this year that are coming into elementary school, so I think that's a great use of our, of our resources for next year, to be able to provide those, especially given the pandemic, so thank you for looking into that and making that happen.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Tunncliff.
And that's all, Ms. Triggs, President Triggs Scales?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, thank you. So, three high-level questions. First, the 5.7 million from the state, is that assured at this point? Can we count on that, or? I know, as much as we can be assured of anything.
We, we are not different from last year. We are not hearing anything to indicate that, that, that there's an instability or an uncertainty in that funding, and I think with the, the, the prospective federal funding, which is coming to the states, I think the likelihood that that number remains steady is good, but you just never know. You never know if they're going to pull, you know, come back to you in August and pull 1.5, or something to that, to that effect. But it does raise a good question, which is if we, if you, if you, if you further cut at this point, and then they cut, then that's compounded, so it is a bit of a safeguard in the event that that does happen down the road.
Yeah, so, and you actually anticipated my second question, which was, do we have any, any early insight into that 1.9 trillion from the federal government, and whether we think any of that will end up as additional funds in West Orange, or is it just way too early to, to have any insight into that?
I, I wouldn't. Ms. Flowers, have you been hearing anything within the business administrator networks?
No, I have not heard anything yet either, but we'll definitely keep, keep us abreast of it soon as, if we hear anything, for sure.
Okay, great. And then, finally, just with regards to the number of staffing positions, I heard you mention, I think, 35, and what I was wondering is, do you have the numbers at the different percentage tax levies of how many positions we think we would need to cut at each of those different levels?
We do, so, so if we were at, if we, you know, so if we were at zero, or you have the numbers there, Ms. Flowers? I think we have that, that side-by-side in the budget binder. So basically, at 0%, we would have an additional $2 million to cut, so if we, if it were, if it were, say, 1% instead of 1.5, it would be, I'm assuming it would be a million to cut? And that, you know, and we're estimating that, because at this point, we're really looking at instructional staff, so we're estimating that. I think we estimated it at about $70,000 per staff member between the, an estimated starting salary and then an estimated benefit allotment, so it's approximately, what, you know, like, you know, about 19, how many, how many teachers per million, Ms. Flowers? My, my brain isn't working right now mathematically.
Yo, let me do some math here for you also. You said a million dollars, and we're looking at, oh wait, I'm not on.
No, I am, you did, you're good.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, so if we're looking at a million dollars, we're averaging with benefits, and we did 69,000 for teachers, you gotta do some, yeah, right, 57 plus 12 for benefits, 57 salary, and if we're looking at, yeah, my brain's not working either, neither from my calculator. Give me one second here.
Sorry, I was too late to reach for my calculator, I didn't mean to put you on this spot.
Talk quiet, all right. So we're looking at about 14 staff members at a, per million.
Right, that's, I round to 30 for two, yeah, and it was, it's two, it's two, one, so it actually, it ends up coming to maybe 29 at two, at 2.1, so if we came in at 1%, that would be, you know, would be half that, if we came down a half a percent.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, that's just the, you know, the heavy, the heavy side of all of this is considering where the cuts come from, so just wanted to make sure I had those numbers straight, so, thank you, that's good.
Can I just add something to a question that you had asked? I was on the legislative call on Saturday, and Senator Gopal spoke, and there's apparently $130 billion that are set aside as part of that package specifically for schools, so hopefully that helps answer the question. I don't know how much of that New Jersey receives and how much it gets filtered down to us, but.
Okay, thank you, that, that was good to know. I know that you did attend on Saturday, so I'm sure you have some other things to share with us later. I'm, I'm concerned with how we're going to provide instruction for students over the summer, those who we assess who need some support. I know that, I think I know that the state has asked that we look at students who are below grade level, on grade level, and above grade level, so when we determine that there are a number of students who need some support during the summer, how will we address that, Dr. Cascon?
Sure, thank you for that question, President Triggs Scales. So, you know, we presently, obviously through this budget as presented, contains funding for, for both, obviously, the ESY program, as well as the high school, summer school program. We're in the process of developing not only summer programs, but also during the year, kind of sidecar programs, and our intent is to utilize the SR2 funding, a part, we got about $3 million through SR2, approximately a little over a third of which we've earmarked for, for HVAC remediations. Now, Ms. Flowers, is, I know that there are separate allocations for that, I know there's about a $60,000 application for mental health, is there a second separate allocation for learning loss?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
And that's, do you recall, do you have to recall the number of that?
I believe it's about 130, but I'll get those somewhere around there.
Okay, yeah, so we have, so, so that, the, the, you know, the big chunk, the 3 million, now is that 130 and 60 included within that 3 million, or is that above and beyond?
A little above, it's above.
It's above, right, so, so we have about $130,000 at our disposal through the SR2 grant, which is going to be dedicated almost exclusively to, to learning loss, so that's summer programming on the elementary, middle school level, as well as, again, sidecar programming during the year for ongoing support. And then an additional, I think, 60 million, which is for mental health services, so I have Ms. Butler looking into that with her team to understand the best way to utilize that, that money for supports.
Great, great, glad to hear that, and I know we'll get additional details as the programs are fleshed out, because I do know that the February 22nd, the Professional Development Day, that was the topic for the day, so.
Indeed, and indeed, and originally, I was going to have Mr. Mendez and members of her curriculum team come on the 22nd, but, you know, we've been, been really focusing more on the budget, but I have asked Mr. Mendez, and I know she's, she is intending on presenting at a future board meeting, and I think probably once we have those summer programs a bit more fleshed out, she can present on both what we did on the 22nd, our ongoing work, and also what we have in store for the summer.
Thank you kindly. All righty, so we are now up to questions from the public on agenda items.
Do you want to hit school reopening?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Cascon.
No, that's okay.
I'll throw it back to you.
I'm hopeful that, you know, with my update, I might answer some of the questions that might presently be out there on school reopening, and I'm happy to do that. All right, so, talk about school reopening. The, really, the question regarding the required social distance of six feet, or if less is permissible, is really the million-dollar question, isn't it? And I can tell you that I have spoken with a number of, of local superintendents, and while I'm part of a larger superintendent's roundtable, I've sort of become in, in a bit of what you might call an affinity group with superintendents from Livingston, Verona, Cedar Grove, Caldwell, and West Essex, just sort of happened, and so, and I can tell you, having spoken with Dr. Block, Superintendent Livingston, that their spring forward plan does not presently include the closing of that six-foot social distance. I did ask him, like, well, how is that possible? And he said, well, they're K2 cohorts, at least their K2 cohorts are small enough where they can combine them and maintain that social distance. I can tell you that the superintendents of those other districts are also in the lurch like I am in looking at the CDC guidelines, and then saying, you know, these, these are not currently reflected within the New Jersey Department of Education requirements, and how do, how do we negotiate that? So I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit more as we go through the report, but let's, let's take, let's take a few steps back here, you know, the Road Back Guidebook, which, which has been the governing, the governing document for school district planning, and around which West Orange, West Orange is NJ DOE, county superintendent, and Board of Education-approved plan is based, does call for six feet. Now, it does say when practicable, but, but my, my interpretation of practicable is that when you can do it, not, not, you know, as, as negotiable, but if you're able to do it, you do it, and that's, that's the way we've been approaching it. Now, from what I understand, the most recently released CDC guidelines indicate that if your region and/or your local municipality is in the lower moderate range, then that six-foot social distance is not required. So we, but that's CDC, you know, I, along with all the other superintendents, are waiting further guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education and Department of Health as to whether they are going to align their guidelines with the most recent guidelines from the CDC. Regardless, our region does presently remain, at least as, as the end of last week, our region does remain, though trending in the right direction, in that high-risk range. And certainly, if the trajectory of cases and the emerging herd immunity continue to take root, it is highly probable that our region will move into the moderate or low-range, at which time we'll be able to combine cohorts and offer more time. And certainly, if the trajectory of cases and the emerging herd immunity continue to take root, it is highly probable that our region will move into the moderate or low range, at which time we'll be able to combine cohorts and offer more time on site potentially. Now, in the letter I sent home to the community this evening, I spoke to the planning for September in some detail. And while I understand, you know, our community's interest in knowing what September will bring, and we are using some predictive strategies to plan for it, the reality. And that which I do believe that people in their heart of hearts understand and know is that there really is no way to know what September will bring. That being said, we are approaching it from the standpoint that the current trajectory of the pandemic will continue to improve. And that, and and with that, decreased social distance requirements, that we will be able to bring our students in for full days every day of the week. With a parallel virtual cohort being instructed by virtual only teachers for those families who to wish to exercise that option for their children. We are currently in conversations relative to adding Friday. As an onsite day in an alternating fashion for cohorts A and B on the elementary level. And I am meeting with secondary principals tomorrow to take a look at their numbers and understand the feasibility of combining cohorts to go to two cohorts as opposed to four at the middle school and ultimately at the high school. In terms of utilizing additional spaces, I'm not sure there is a great utility to that. Because at the end of the day, we have a limited number of staff and additional spaces would simply require additional staff that we do not have. So I'm not sure that that's really a solution. Now, there seems to be some some misinformation out there about public school districts returning full time, and there may be a couple out there in the state. I'm not aware of any school district in Essex County that is going back five days a week, full days. I know that there are some that are planning or even presently in five days a week, half days. And and I think it's important that we've, we've only recently gotten into our schools and and are really starting to to ramp up and work towards that. As far as the decrease in enrollment, we've seen approximately 130 students transfer out of district this year with approximately a third of those for the purposes of transferring to a a private institution. We have approximately 60 staff members presently out on workplace accommodations, not all of whom require substitutes, and they are in varying stages of receiving the vaccine. And upon receipt of the second dose, the expectation is that they will return. And we have, in fact, have had some staff members who were originally out on accommodations and have come back. I'm also happy to report that I'm working with Mayor Parisi in the Western Orange Department of Health to set up a vaccination clinic here on site, you know, in one of our facilities for our staff. And I will be sending a survey out to the staff in this regard this week to understand how many staff members would be interested in participating in that clinic so that our partners in the township can reach out to the county. For the required number of doses. There are a lot of logistics that go with that relative to the storage of the vaccines, and that would have to be something that. We'd they'd have to know how many we needed and we'd have to plan that, but they are committed to working with us and and we are as well. As far as the high school start time, I mean, presently, there is no plan to change that. And you may recall that an explanation was provided for this previously, and it has to do with busing. Running our high school, middle school and elementary runs at the times they typically do when we're in brick and mortar. Does not allow the necessary time in between runs for buses to be sanitized. The only way around this is if we did not sanitize the buses in between rounds. And this is presently not an option which I'm willing to exercise, though I know there are districts that are not doing it. We're not one of those. And if this precaution is lifted under state guidelines next year, then or before that, then we can adapt accordingly. Relative to Fridays for deep cleaning, and this has been a, this is, this up to this point has been a fairly standard part of most public school reopening plans, including ours. And to the best of my knowledge, any school district removing this day from the circulation would need to submit revised plans to the New Jersey Department of Education, getting their seal approval on it. And I think we need to understand that it it sends a mixed message, I believe, to staff, families and students alike. When for months, we and hundreds of school districts around the state have indicated that the day for deep cleaning is necessary, and then all of a sudden. In in the absence of any authorization to do so, we kind of abandoned it as unnecessary. Now, there have been some inquiries. Whether or not parents could sign a hold harmless agreement for sending their children in. And I have to admit, I have not explored the legal possibility of this, but there are still employees to consider. And so as far as our employees are concerned, I believe. That we must ensure that as the employer, that the work environment into which we are putting them is appropriately aligned with the current guidelines under which we are operating. You know, it's been asked as to, you know, what are the barriers for returning to school in September full time? And the barriers are namely that we continue to operate within a global pandemic, the trajectory of which can change at any time. And under the current guideline guidelines provided to us by the New Jersey Department of Education, as I understand them. Preclude us, as one would imagine they do, from placing 100% occupancy in buildings, when occupancy remains partial in virtually every other setting within our society. If the social distance and occupancy guidelines are relaxed, then the primary barrier to returning full time is therefore removed. Now, I'm somewhat confounded, but at the same time empathetic and understanding to question from questions from parents that say, you know, how could, how can we know that we're not going to be hybrid in the fall? Now, I understand that our individual and collective patience with the situation in which we find ourselves is exhausted, plain and simple gone. We want life, we need life to return to normal. However, I would suggest that this emotional need does not remove the basic realities with which we are faced. As an additional point in relative to athletics. And and I apologize if, you know, my high school English teacher would be on all over me about my transitions here, but you know, these, you know, I'm really responding to questions just that have come up. And so, you know, my my transitions are a bit rugged here. I apologize. But relative to athletics, the CDC and the American Medical Association recommend. Community mitigation strategies when conducting onsite school. Which includes the consideration of no athletics. Now, the conservative move with athletics. Operating contemporaneously with onsite instruction would have been to cancel. Can't to cancel athletics. And then it certainly, if you look at at articles published recently by JAMA, that's one of the suggestions. This is obviously with the governor's ongoing support of this. This was not a move that I wanted to make primarily because I do believe that for those students participating, not only whether it's scholarship opportunities, but also just the psychological benefit of it. That the compromise was that if they wished to participate in athletics for the duration of the season, they would remain virtual. So this, to me, represented a compromise, a moderate approach somewhere in the middle. And we talked a little bit about learning loss, the February 22nd Staff Development Day. The entire afternoon was dedicated to presenting data on learning loss as well as developing intervention plans by subject areas to address this. Teachers, guidance counselors, administrators are identifying students at risk and developing intervention plans for them. And as I mentioned, I will invite Mr. Mendez to come to a future board meeting and present on the district's plan relative to learning loss. Relative to mental health. Our teachers and school counselors continue to take an extremely hands-on approach. In fact, our school counselors presented at a Board of Education meeting several months ago. And I would encourage community members to visit the Board of Education website where all board presentations can be found. Further, we are beginning to plan our approach for next year in terms of what kinds of supports initially students and staff will need for reentry and periodic checkpoints along the way. And we mentioned the S R two grant. Now, the turnaround time for this grant is relatively quick, and therefore there is not substantial time for stakeholder input. However, a good portion of this grant is being used for technology hardware to ensure that we're continuing to refresh our devices, particularly on the elementary level. HVAC remediations, which are now permissible, and a number of, a number of other expenses which we've been able to to divert from the local budget in order to close that deficit of $3 million. And again, this grant will also be used to address learning loss. Relative to what is driving the opening plan and timeline for West Orange, I think it is really important to reiterate once again. You know, in spite of numerous times that I've reminded the community about the path which has led us here today. First, I think it's really important to realize that presently, we are implementing the plan which we designed. And which was approved by the New Jersey Department of Education, the County Superintendent and the Local Board of Education. We're not doing less than what we plan to do, and in some cases, we're doing more, for example, offering some specialized populations additional time and operating into scholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. We were delayed twice previously with our implementation in August, and and I just want to reiterate this because I know that. There's. Some editorialization as to what what's beyond, what has been behind us not opening, even though we've been. Very transparent and very forthright in speaking to the community about, you know, what what delayed us until January and getting in. But that was in August due to the need to remediate very real HVAC concerns, like many school districts, school districts around the state, and which we were able to do successfully. And then second in November, as you recall, we were advised unsolicited. By the district physician and local public health authorities to postpone implementation. Shortly before the holiday break, I laid out a timeline for return, and we have held to this timeline and implemented it. And while I understand now with COVID fatigue greater than ever, and with a school district in a surrounding town putting out a plan for what they intend to do in April, there is an expectation or hope that we return for more. But I do think it bears mentioning. That we are implementing exactly what we plan to do and at the same time evaluating other options for moving forward. I think what sends mixed messages to our, as I mentioned before, what sends mixed messages to our employees and some families is when guidelines which have been laid out. And which to some extent had been communicated as gospel are indiscriminately changed, though they have not been done so by the overseeing authorities. Simply due to pressure. This, this becomes a very, very difficult decision to stand behind as a superintendent. And as I've said to a number of parents who've reached out to me, you know, is I encourage. I encourage our our community stakeholders to 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 bring a similar level of advocacy to our New Jersey Department of Education, to our State Department of Health. To align their guidelines with the CDC guidelines or to align their guidelines with the American Pediatric Association or to align their guidelines with the World Health Organization, all of which recommend. A a smaller, support a smaller distance, but to ask me as a non-public health professional, as a non-medical professional. To to make the decision in the absence of actual authorization from the Department of Education and State Department of Health to go with another organization's recommendation. I I believe is a little bit is is a little bit unreasonable to ask that of me. People have asked about private schools. Private school has the latitude to say, we're going to use the APA guidelines. They have, they have absolute latitude to do that. Presently, we do not have that latitude, at least operating within the level of risk that we are as a as a community. I think, you know, it took us some time to get in. And and there and there were good and legitimate reasons for that. And I think it's important to remember that our implementation is in its relative infancy. And while conditions are improving, they are, they are, I would argue, they are nowhere near a level which justifies lowering of our guard. That being said. I will be convening a meeting with the district physician and local department of health this week to understand if they feel differently. We've always talked about being guided and directed by the public health and medical experts. They've guided us before. They postponed us in November. They gave us the green light in January. And they can help us navigate this moving forward. And again, I, you know, I appreciate the advocacy. However, I think I don't need to remind everyone that I nor the board makes public health policy. And just as a final point, because, you know, an article was shared with me today, and it was a good article. And and it talked about. How you talked about the 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 impacts of of students not being in school. And, you know, not only academic, but 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 social, emotional. And and I can assure you, none of these things escape me. They don't escape our leadership. They don't escape the board. They don't escape our staff. But the question becomes, why are the governing overseeing authorities? Why are they, why are they not reading those articles? Why are they not taking this into consideration? Why are they handcuffing us and hamstringing us with these things? Those are the entities that make the public health policy. And and up to date, they have not loosened those restrictions. Now, final piece, which is, and I think the disconnect that's created in some people's minds is. How is it that other schools, school districts have gone, you know, under six feet? Well, I think in some cases, they might be in regions where now under CDC guidelines, they're able to do that. Or their infection rates are such where they feel confident doing that. But as I've said all along. You know, I. I have to make decisions which are. Which are in the best interest of this community and what you're taking into consideration the circumstances of this community. I can, and I have to use the governing guidelines which have been provided to me by the Department of Education. I can't answer a question why another superintendent has said, you know, we're going to discretionarily lessen that six foot distance. And up to this point. The board has been in support of this plan. As it's been in been in place, but I'll continue to speak with the board. I'll continue to speak with local medical and public health experts and understand if that's something that we can relax sooner rather than later. And that President Frick's calculus is my report.
Now I got you, Dr. Kasko. Board members, I'm going to do one more round in case you have questions for Dr. Kasko. Ms. Huerta?
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Kasko, and thank you, Mrs. Terry Chig skills. I have no comment. I think I want to see the. Parents in the community call in. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Merklinger.
Sure. So just a few follow up questions. I know. And and I, you might have touched on this a little bit, but if you just maybe go into it, I think. Right now, there are not any plans to bring in barriers in the classroom for the rest of the square, but and I'm not sure if I read this or heard this, but. Are we considering bringing or putting in barriers so we can increase the number of students in the classroom and then? That that six feet can then be three feet or whatever. So there is some sort of, I I know that I've seen a lot of pictures online and, you know, photos of classrooms where they have those plastic dividers. So that's one of the the items. I was just wondering if we have plans for that.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I I actually. I know that, you know, Dr. Block. You know, recently put in a. $70,000 order for for dividers over there, and I did request that information from him, the vendor he used. I've asked the principals to populate a a Google. Sheet with the the number that they would need, and we are going to move forward with the purchase of those. Because whether we utilize them this year. Or whether we really utilize them next year, I do believe that that will be a piece to the puzzle as we, you know, when we close distance. And and I think that. I do believe that the closing of the distance is going to be coming down the pike. I can't exactly say when. But I do believe that's going to be happening. And when it does, I do think that for additional peace of mind of our staff and our students, we do need to have barriers in place. So. I'm waiting for the finalization of that spreadsheet, and then we'll be moving forward with the purchase of those dividers. And I understand that it's about a two or three week turnaround from when we'll have them.
Great. Kind of just following up about the high school. I know there's some concern that there's maybe one student in each classroom. And it's discouraging, you know, other students who were planning to go back in are not going in because, hey, what's the point if just one kid is going to be in my classroom? So I'm not going to go in or I'm going to opt. It's my senior year. I'm going to stay home. And part of that is also, you know, also playing into that is the start time. So parents who have children at the high school aren't able to get their kids to school, right? So some of us. Working have to work, we're not able to drive our children to school. Any thoughts about moving that? I know you'd said we're not looking to move the start time, but maybe for September. If if, I guess, to your point about the transportation, if that were to change, where not necessarily wiping down everything, although I I agree with you, it's probably see a more of a safety. Measure to take. Is there any thought to that? Because I know part of why we moved the start time also had to do with the athletics, right? Students would come in, play their sport and or go to school and then have practice right after school. So that was part of the rationale for changing the start time. But any thoughts to moving that start time back in September to help parents who, to be honest with you, I know a lot of corporate America is going back into the office coming September. That's, that's been the plan, at least across most five Fortune 500 companies is you're going back in regardless come September. So parents may not have that work from home option anymore. And on top of that, the childcare piece.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great questions. So let's talk about the the cohorts. So. I think that, you know, as far as the high school went, we kind of needed to get it, get it up and running. I know that. I I know that Mr. Moore is already. Really engaged with his team and understanding what, you know, what they're seeing after the first couple of weeks of data in terms of numbers of students in classes. And as I mentioned in my, in my update tomorrow, I have my weekly meeting with the secondary principals. And that's top of the agenda is. I want to try and compress cohorts. My my goal is to be able to go from four to two. Talk to me about the feasibility of that with number of students who are coming in. I think part and parcel of that is also the survey that went out. You know, which I sent some clarification out on today in a letter in understanding, do we have any parents who are just like, you know what, like? Like regardless vaccines, improving trajectory, we're just going to sit this one out, you know? And, and those who, you know, and even if, and just for clarification for any parents who might be listening in. And I had a parent email me this evening. Even if you're, you're sort of like, well, I, I want to kind of, like if things continue to improve, like I, I could see sending my kids in this year. Then put no to that question, say, say no. These are really only for people who are very resolute in their mind that it's not happening this year for their kids. And we understand that that's probably going to be a relatively small number. But even if we know what that number is, that, that can help us in exploring the feasibility in the immediate term, short term of compressing those cohorts. So that is absolutely a, something that we're working on right now and which I really like to see happen. And yet, you know what? You're right. I mean, you're right about the start time. You know, I think we have some time to try and figure that out. And I think it's a, I think if we're able to restore the traditional schedule, I, I, I think that that makes a lot of sense. And I'm really going to try and get that done. You know, this was something where it was sort of a midstream change, which was not great, you know, being honest. It was something that sort of came up on the fly and we appreciate really. Parents and students flexibility on that has been incredible. But I think if we can restore the, the standard schedules. That would be, that, that's really our goal for next year. So I appreciate you mentioning that and I'll, and I'll speak to Mr. Moore about that and just kind of, kind of plant that seed. That's what we want to try and get done.
Yeah, because it's, it does sound like, and, and not to bring it back to sports, but it does sound like the NJSI is trying to get back to the schedules that they had. Pre-COVID, which would mean that our high school students would need to end the school day and, you know, be able to leave for games that are at four o'clock and so to speak. Not that that should play a big factor in it, but that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, absolutely. And look, our, our goal is to have them in a full day. So, you know, I think now they're, they come in later and, you know, they're, they, you know, they, they end at a time which enables them to go to practice or games. But, you know, our, our end game would be that they're, you know, they're, they're attending for a full day of school, not an abbreviated day of school. So, and you know what? I'm optimistic that if we're, you know, if we're in, look at if come, you know, come September, we're in a low range of risk. And as some estimates have indicated that we could be at 70%, you know, vaccination herd immunity by, by the summer. Then I think the likelihood that the, that, that there may be a relaxation on some of the protocols is good. And that might be something that, or we can look at other ways in which we can try and get those, that, that cleaning done quicker. But I think it's, I think it's a fair ask and it makes sense to try and restore that schedule. So I appreciate you reinforcing that and we'll get to work on it.
And just one last, more of I guess of PSA. I know you sent out that survey to parents in the community who are, who are virtual. And I think the, the question is for virtual parents or are you planning to keep your student home or looking to the hybrid? And I can't stress enough how much that information really is going to play actually into the budget for, for. You know, just on a selfish level, because needing to balance this budget and knowing how many students, how many staff we have that are going to be in classrooms versus. Having that need for the virtual staff. That's really, this survey is really going to help us with, I think with that and correct me if I'm wrong. But also for things like the aftercare programs, you know, from what I hear, you know, JCC is already waitlisted for, for next year even. So these are concerns I think our community has. And I think this survey is really, it's really important that we have the results of it just from a planning perspective for September and how this budget's going to roll out. So just to plug the survey again. That was it.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger and Vice President Tony Cliff.
Hey, thank you. I don't know that I have anything specific, but I did want to ask if you could, there was a letter that went out to. High school students who were in the class of 2021 and class of 2022 about. Not really a gap year, but an extra year. And I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to that, so the public understands a little more about the intention behind that.
So this is, you know, this is a program that's, that basically is, it's a, it's a pilot program, if you will. Through the, through the New Jersey Department of Education. And I. There, there are definitely, definitely people, including Ms. Butler, Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald and Ms. Mendez. Actually, Mr. Mendez, Mr. Mendez, I believe is on the call. Mr. Mendez, do you, do you have any, would you be able to weigh in on that at all?
Yes, just let me bring her over because we put her in the tenny pool. Just give me one moment. Grab her. There we go. Okay, she should be joining. Momentarily. There we go. And just we just make sure we test your audio, Mr. Mendez. I don't know if you can hear me? Yes.
Could you repeat the question?
Any insight you can share on the bridge year program? I mean, I, I have some thoughts as well, but I didn't know if you had, had some additional thoughts.
I do know that Ms. Butler is exploring that. It is a lengthy process in order to really engage in the program. We're thinking about what can we can do for the summer extended programs using the summer school, leveraging what opportunities currently exist. As Dr. Kasko mentioned earlier, when you were talking about summer and the budget, right? There are different activities, different things that we're looking to engage students into, close those learning gaps. But that summer bridge program does present a very long process that would entail. A lot of partnerships and working that we, you know, we're exploring, but we don't know if we can enter into it readily. So we can ask Ms. Butler, Dr. Kasko to, to give us an update and, and forward that to see what that really looks like. I don't have further information than that.
I mean, thank you, Mr. Mendez. I mean, I, I think the gist of it is, is that it, it offers, it offers students an opportunity to defer graduation. And they take a combination of in their first semester, they take a combination of high school credit courses. And county college courses. So they're kind of enrolled, dual enrolled in the high school and the county college in the first, the first semester. And then in the second semester, it actually necessitates that they take all, all college course, all college credits. And they do have an opportunity to take credits from a four year institution. So, and I do know that, that if students were interested in participating, I believe the notification deadline to the school may have already passed. But I'll have to double check on that. But to date, I do not believe we had any students that, that have taken advantage of that opportunity. And I also, they have to have turned, I believe there's an age requirement. Which is they have to be 19 years old or younger during the entirety of the bridge year. So a student that would turn 20 during the bridge year would not be eligible. So those are just a, and there are some different eligibility requirements for special needs students. Special needs students may turn 20 during the bridge year. And a student has to maintain a GPA of 2.0 during the, during that, that particular bridge year, so. But to date, we have not had, I do not believe we've had any takers on that as of yet. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Yes, so first question, Dr. Kasko, you mentioned. For September reopening. The possibility of having, you know, classes happening brick and mortar with a parallel virtual cohort. And my question was, because I'm not sure I heard you quite correctly. Would there be a separate set of teachers? Would those students essentially be in different classes, the, the virtual classrooms?
That, that would be the goal. That, that would be the goal. And I do know that it's, that, that's, that there are districts that have pulled it off, that they tend to be smaller districts. But, but it has happened, but, but that's the, we would need that data. You know, well in advance at the beginning of the school year to kind of flesh out that, that schedule. Ms. Flowers, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, and you know, I believe the district from which you came, so it was, I believe a K8. But correct me if I'm wrong, they had kind of, were able to kind of work that out?
Yes, you're correct. We started in a hybrid program and, but there were some classes that were 100% virtual, but much smaller district.
Yeah. And you had, and you had how many elementary schools?
It was two buildings, K through eight.
Two buildings, K three, one was K five, the other.
K two in one building and then three through eight in the second building.
Okay. So, so you, you know, so you know, you, you'd be able to have, you know, a virtual teacher assigned to a grade level in a, you know, in a school. You know, the question in West Orange is, is would you have enough students where it would, it would merit or justify a staff member in each school dedicated exclusively to that grade? Would we have to band students together potentially from multiple elementary schools? And is that something that parents would be amenable to? So there's, there's a lot of details to work out with that. But suffice to say, we need to have fairly clean data as far as what parents were interested in doing fairly early. And we recognize that's a challenge because you're asking parents to sign on a dotted line in July. You know, or you know, in, in, by early July with a whole summer ahead and potentially positive growth happening relative to the situation is tough. But that's what it would require. We need folks understanding that our remote learning policy. Cannot preclude, we can't say, well, you know, once you choose virtual, that's what you got for the rest of the year. No, obviously, if it's the will of the parent that at some point in time they switch, they can. It's just a matter of establishing a timeline. Personally, as I mentioned in my letter today, I think it's, I think it's not appropriate to. To, to, to make that timeline any longer than it would, than would the district would need to really. The maximum that the district would need in order to get the ducks in the road to onboard that student. Because at that point, if you make it longer than that, then we're really just delaying the entry to the student for reasons other than logistics and being able to actually do it. So, and the policy that we adopted for remote learning was a standard policy that was created by our policy advisor Strauss S. May. And it is, from my understanding, the policy that most school districts are using and have that same timeline in place. I'm not aware of any that have a longer timeline written into their policy.
Great, thank you. I mean, it's good to know that we're aware that that's going to be a scenario and at least doing the planning to figure it out. Also very happy to hear about working with the township and the Department of Health on vaccinations. Theoretically, that I think would, would hopefully mean more of our faculty and staff could be vaccinated more quickly. And, and that's great. Also, the, the learning loss. Program and identifying the students who may be falling behind and developing interventions for them. So happy to hear that we're taking a jump on that. That's hearing an awful lot of that in the news as well. And once again, glad that we're, that we're working on this. And. Two things that are, I guess I'm not really looking for, for answers other than yes, we're on top of it. I was talking with, with my family earlier today about starting at the high school in the fall. And realizing that there's going to be a larger number than normal of students entering the high school who are new to the high school and unfamiliar with the facility. And wondering what that would look like in terms of, will there be enough help for that many students who aren't sure where they are and where they're going? But that also led to a, to a separate question about. Cultural. Cultural items, traditions within the high school that get passed on from seniors to juniors usually. I'm not aware of what those would be at our high school, but the potential for loss of that and whether there's any way to get. Graduating seniors or maybe even alumni to. To share some of those stories and traditions to try to maintain some of that and, and not lose it. So again, not looking for a reply, but just sort of putting it out there as are these things that maybe could be addressed before we get started in September.
And I, and I, and you didn't say it to answer, but I do, I do have a little bit of insight into the first question, Mr. Rothstein. You know, I had a good conversation with, with Cheryl Butler. Several weeks ago, and she, she had actually reached out to me and really just kind of posed the question of what are we doing? What are we, what are we doing in terms, systemically and from a strategic planning standpoint? To understand the kinds of, this word gets overused, but it's, it's valid. The, 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 the kind of the distinct, unique, social, emotional needs our students will bring to bear, starting school in the fall with that reentry. And so we had a great conversation. I said, what I want you to do is, I want you to kind of assemble with your team of school counselors. And give me a policy brief. Give me, give me a set of, you know, you know, seven to 10 bullet points, like key considerations. Like for example, how are we approaching student orientations differently is an example. You know, what kind of periodic, social, emotional check-ins are we making with students? How are we allotting time for that? And so that then we could use that to help develop a really a strategic plan for next year to make sure that we're tending to those needs. So that, that's in the works. So I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. I, I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments because I'm looking at the time and I want to be sensitive to our public. But talking about the class of 2021. They've had a totally different experience than the class of 2020. 2020 started the year and then ended the year out. And 21 has done just the opposite. They started out and are now coming in. And I know that last year, the board did something special for the class of 2020. And I'd just like to ask our board to consider doing something special for the class of 2021. And we can talk about it. But I think that. It, it would be a wonderful gesture to let them know how much we appreciate what they've been through and how much we appreciate them. So I hope that that's something that we can talk about down the road. With that said, we're going to now really open up questions from the public on agenda items only. Ms. Gravteza, thank you very much.
Thank you, yes. At this time, if you can use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. For question on public agenda items only. And if you are one of our call in attendees, it is star nine. Again, you can raise your hand now, you do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking. First, we will have Julie Bookbinder. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Julie Bookbinder, 37 Collmar Circle. Thank you to Dr. Kasko and the board for rolling out the hybrid program. As far as I can see with my children in elementary school, it's going pretty well. On the days that they go in, they wake up before dawn, they get dressed, they run in, they are so excited to go into school. And all I can say is that we're really hopeful that the weather cooperates in March. So that everything can go smoothly across all of the grade levels for hybrid. But that doesn't mean that we should stop. I appreciate the remarks that, you know, we are doing the plan that was set in motion. And even beyond that for certain populations, but we must keep moving ahead. I did not hear any discussion tonight about many details with respect to what else we can do for in-person learning this school year. I appreciate the thoughts for the fall. I too am cautiously optimistic that families who choose will be able to go in for five full days. But what are we doing now? I understand that under the current guidance, there may be barriers to combining cohorts. But what about a longer day? The weather is getting warmer, children can have lunch outside, children can have short lunches in the classroom. My children actually explained to me that, you know, prior to this, on a half day, they would often have lunch in their classroom. They would put on a short video and it was short. They're six feet apart. This is something that has been done in other schools and we should at least look at it here or understand why we're not looking at it. Additionally, I was wondering if the two weeks remote after spring break is still going forward. And what the basis of that is. And finally, I'm interested to hear the basis for that full day of cleaning. I have been, now I'm a layperson, but I've gone through the state plan that cites to the EPA website and all sorts of things. And I'm having trouble finding what the basis is for a full day of cleaning. Maybe there was one at some point, but through this whole time, all the professionals have been learning and expanding. The guidance and understanding what we need to do to stay safe. So in my humble opinion. So in my humble opinion, is just one person changing that now? If there's new guidance or if there's not an actual concrete basis for doing that would not be a mixed message. It shows that we're learning and we're making progress, and I hope we continue to do so. My children really love their school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Nerissa Svetvilius. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Oh. Nerissa unraised her hand or lowered her hand. So I'm going to go to the next person. Nerissa, if that was a mistake, you can re-raise your hand and I'll put you up next. Felice Flit, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi there.
Hi. Yes, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Felice Flit, 55 Bowlin Drive.
Thanks.
So first of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the whole board, but especially to Dr. Kascone. Thank you for listening to the parents. Those of us that do follow the health requirements and everything that the guidelines who want our children back in school. Thank you. I think it's very promising for what you have proposed for the immediate future and for the the thoughts for the fall. I know you can't write anything down because who knows what's going to happen, but that's that's awesome. My boys are both cohort B. So my Liberty School student missed his first few days because of the snow. They both started last week and it was amazing. They both loved it. Gary, don't worry, your kids won't get lost in the high school. There are plenty of people to guide them. My son, I I was so concerned, but he he figured it out. And by the second day, he's like, I totally know where all my classrooms are and and got it. So thank you. And here's to maybe five days in school this semester. I'll take four, but whatever it is, thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Lauren Weinshank. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Lauren Weinshank, 6 Carilene, West Orange. Thank you, first of all, to Dr. Kascone and the Board of Ed. My name is probably familiar because I think I write you once a week. So I really do appreciate your responses. Dr. Kascone, I do want to say you answered all of my questions in your comments, so I really appreciate that. I feel very positive. I think your comments and plans are appropriate and realistic. My main concerns were the Fridays, which does seem to be addressed, especially in elementary school, and is also combining the cohorts. I also want to thank the teachers. I know that going into hybrid was scary. I know in surrounding districts, as you know, they're moving forward, there's also some districts moving backwards. And I really do appreciate the fact that the teachers went in and my kids are so happy. My elementary school student loves loves Redwood so much. My Edison student, although he was apprehensive, he actually said, you know, Mom, my teachers are so much nicer in person, even though they're nicer on the screen. So I really appreciate that. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm very happy. And thank you to everybody who's really put in a lot of work for this, for us and our kids and our town. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have, it's just listed as Sarah with an H. If you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record, please. Okay, it's labeled under Sarah, just S A R A H. Oh, there you go. Hi.
Hi, did that work?
Yes, it did.
Hi, this is Sarah on 47 Oak Ridge Road. And I agree with Ms., I believe she said her name was Bookbinder. I was also wondering why we needed to set aside a full day for cleaning. I wasn't sure where, you know, where that requirement came from. I know that a lot of students are in full time already, including my older child, and they don't have a full day for cleaning. So I'm not sure if that day could maybe be done on a weekend or in the evenings. So I was just wondering about that. I also wanted to share that my daughter has really been enjoying hybrid. I thought about allowing her to speak, but she really needs to be in her room and in bed. But her cohort is actually one of the few that's pretty full. She has nine children in the class with her. And she said that it's quote unquote weird, but it's very good. And I really think it's important for us to continue moving forward. And it, the process really still requires adjustment for students. And from my experience, you know, they really need to get used to getting up and getting dressed again. They have to learn how to mask all day and figure out how to interact in person with other students and teachers. So I think it's important that we continue moving forward for them and not allow too big of a period of time to pass between when, you know, continuing to do this, right? Like, we really want the kids to start getting used to going again. So in preparation of possibly going full time again in September after everybody's been vaccinated, I just really think it's important for us to carry on and possibly get, you know, the high schoolers in more frequently and the middle schoolers in more frequently. And and I I really support any efforts towards that. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Tez Ruero. Tez, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Tez Ruero, 24 Hutton. First, I want to say I don't think I heard it today unless I missed it. Happy International Women's Day for everyone, especially our women Board of Education members. I appreciate the work that everyone is doing. I think it's important to remember that. In addition to their official role, they they are parents and families each dealing with their own sets of challenges. So I certainly appreciate all the work that you all are doing, including the superintendent. Every email that I've sent has been answered. So I appreciate that. I'm glad to hear about the outcomes of the budget. Great to hear that it's less number of reduction that we're potentially looking at. I'm also happy to hear that, at least within my son's school, which is Gregory, that the counselor is offering some sessions to get together for some social emotional. So that's great. This is probably already mentioned, but I do want to mention that, you know, in local Facebook work, there's a lot of conversation about how neighboring towns are opening up and 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 things like that. My son attends Gregory and, you know, in the good old days, in the physical world, as I call it, when we had parades, you know, whether it's Halloween or things like that, we have grandparents saying that I went to the same school, right? So I always say it's great for history, but it's not great for you know, our health. It's 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 old systems. And so I think it's important to remember that a lot of our schools are old and primarily the HVAC system is one of the reasons why we can't safely go back. My questions are, let's see. I'd love to know if there is any anything being done about the kindergarten registration to streamline the process a little bit, to remove some of the paperwork. And then, did I hear correctly that in September, we're potentially looking at all hybrid or all in person? Just so I can mentally prepare. And then just a general statement for parents who are attending. We are, the Council of PTA is working with the District to Bring Pre-K Expansion. So it would be helpful if you emailed them and let them know that you're interested, as I'm sure they have competing priorities. They probably like to hear from you that this is of interest to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Adam Kramer. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road, West Orange. I'd like to respond to Dr. Kascone's comments regarding the budget. West Orange taxes at 2.61% of value for schools. It is by far the highest rate in Essex County. The closest to us is Glen Ridge at 1.937. Our commercial tax base is in a state of devastation. There is a significant cohort in West Orange that is only in their homes because of a moratorium on evictions and foreclosures. Under these circumstances, to raise taxes would be unconscionable. You pay your teachers and your staff more than just about every other district in West Orange in Essex County, more than most in New Jersey. You have staffing levels that are more than most high, most schools to punitively taxed people who are economically devastated just to protect the people who work in the school system, in my view, is an act of immorality. You need to really consider the budgets. You need to take a stand with the union. The union cannot set the budget because it's economically devastated. I'm not saying the teachers are bad people. I'm not saying the people who work in the schools are bad people. They're good people. They work hard, but everybody is set in a state of economic sacrifice in this situation. We cannot just have a budget that protects the adults that work in our schools. Union has to give. Something has to give on on benefits. Maybe wages could be, growth could be quartiled so we could keep people employed. You can't just run schools by punitively taxing this community. It's going to have profound, bad implications, especially when the foreclosure and more and 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 eviction moratorium ends. And you can't continue to operate where you tax your schools as a percent of value about a quarter more than the next closest district within within in the county. It's just not right. I thank you for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'll ask if anyone else would like to speak. Now is the time pushing the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody, and I will echo what Tez said. Happy International Women's Day to the ladies on the board. I I'm not sure. I I heard all the information in the bit in the beginning, and it wasn't posted. Will the revisions to the budget in in the superintendent's report be posted at some point after this meeting? Because there's nothing online. The last meeting, I mentioned the special ed audit. I just wanted to know if there is any update on that. Because looking at a couple of the schools, there's some schools that have only one autistic classroom. And in that case, that one class could be moved to nearby schools. There are a couple elementary schools are are close in proximity to each other. There is a child custody team in each building and in central office as well. I think some of those services could be shared between schools. Let's see, what else did I have? A few years ago, $8,000 was built into the budget to update one of one of the rooms at the high school for research of justice for the afternoon program. I want to know, I mean, given that no one was in the buildings for an entire year, was that renovation done? And I heard, Dr. Kascone, you said that you're not freezing capital projects. I I think unless a roof is caving in, capital projects should probably be frozen. I mean, I honestly, it's, you know, it's that kind of year, as Mr. Kramer said, there's a lot of people who are in hard times. I did look up what Ms. Flowers mentioned in the last meeting about the 100 and agreement. I found the last agreement, which was four years, which ends this year, and they received a 2% increase every year for each of the four years in that agreement. And it was not a handshake agreement. It was actually a written agreement with a rate sheet. So they got a 2% increase every year for each of those four years. I didn't go all the way back to the 1990s, but to say that they hadn't gotten an increase since the 1990s. Again, as I said the last time last week, is irresponsible. Thank you for your time. Oh, and also wanted to know if you shopped the insurance? Have you again looked at the state insurance health benefits plan for educators and compared to what you have now? And also if you, if you're putting out an RFP for new vendors to to make sure that you have the most reasonable and responsible vendor. I I think 100 is very expensive, and a couple of years ago, Mr. Calavano was shopping around and was going to break it up so that special ed runs could be done by a different company to alleviate that expense. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Katie Witzig. If you can please follow the prompt that's on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Katie Witzig. My address is 49 Manger Road. So I just had a couple of questions regarding the budget specifically and some problems with the budget. So I was troubled, and it's difficult when you don't have the information in front of you, but I was troubled by the information I heard that for every million dollars that we are short, it affects us negatively that we're going to lose X number of positions. But on the flip side of that, I also heard that for next year, there is a possibility that we are offering on all virtual track for students who don't wish to return. So my real question or my real concern is, how do we justify losing teachers? However, shit, having other teachers that are all virtual. So I'm just wondering what that's going to look like. I also heard something about larger class numbers. So again, I'm wondering if having all virtual is an option. Is that a mandate from the state? Or is that something we're choosing to do? That's number one regarding the budget. Something else I heard regarding the budget was addressing the idea of summer school and that we are concerned about those that need help, that they've fallen behind during this period. And I hear a lot about those that have fallen behind during this period, but I also want to question something I've questioned from the beginning of the school year is, what about the kids that aren't falling behind? What about the kids that, had they been in school, they would have had more opportunities? What are we doing to help address them? Help address the enrichment of these children that have been doing their virtual work, have been doing it well? You know, now that they're back in class, they're still doing it well. However, all the other opportunities they would have had in class or during the regular school year have been taken away. So I understand that the focus needs to bring everybody up to grade level that has suffered, but I also think these other kids have suffered differently as well. There was a note about capital projects regarding the budget. My question, though, as we go into the warmer months, and I believe this falls under capital, it might come under COVID. I don't know where it comes. But there's a lot of conversation about HVAC. And I'm concerned that once the schools open up, which is wonderful and amazing, my son loves it, and the weather gets warmer. How is that going to work within our classrooms? Are they going to be able to run air conditioners? Not everybody has air conditioners. Are they still going to have to have the blowers on? Are the blowers going to blow extra hot air at the kids? A lot of my son's classes usually have fans. They're not going to be able to use fans. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about this going forward so that we can successfully get everybody back into the school. And my last question is, what is the timeline for the budget? So if somebody could tell me that, is it presented again? What's the timeline so that we know how many teachers we're going to lose or changes that need to be made? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is the final call for anyone who would like to speak on agenda items using the raise your hand function. And if you're our calling attendee, it's star nine. Okay, and that seems to be it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza and Dr. Kascone. I am going to how would you say, pass the ball to you?
I got it. Thank you, President Trixkeles, and and thank you to all of our speakers. You know, again, for for being here, for participating, for bringing balanced, you know, measured, but at the same time, you know, good, critical questions to bear, such an important part of our process. And so that's appreciated. So I'll, you know, and I forgive me if I seem kind of animatronic as I roll through these questions, you know, but I want to, you know, really make sure I get to to all of them. So so in terms of Mrs. Bookbinder's questions. So in terms of in the immediate term, what we're looking at, and this would be if we did not get any any clear guidance from either the local Department of Health or the state authorities as to relaxing the social distance. In the short term, we were looking at Fridays, beginning onsite instruction on Fridays and rotating the A, B, and cohort on an alternating basis there. And we are looking at the possibility of combining cohorts on the middle school and the the high school level. You know, the 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 tough thing about extending the day You know, the tough thing about extending the day when we're in this hybrid, and it's actually one of the driving rationale behind the idea of having two parallel cohorts is that we have a whole afternoon in which there's additional instruction delivered. And so it sort of necessitates that those students are back online in that afternoon class, you know, for that period. Well, I guess theoretically, we could extend that day. So I mean, these are all things that we're looking at, but certainly Fridays combine cohorts on the secondary level. You know, building in outside as a standard piece, as a necessary piece. Certainly if students are in and the weather is fine, if you will. You know, certainly we can start utilizing the outdoor spaces for breaks and eating and things of that nature. But you can't always depend upon the outside. So in terms of having it as a formal piece of restructuring the plan, it's not something we could necessarily count on. But certainly something that we can start to use more regularly in terms of getting students out. And perhaps, you know, being in an outside space where they wouldn't even necessarily need to have masks on or certainly be able to take mask breaks. The two-day, the two-week remote after spring break was a recommendation that was originally made by, it came from the Department of Health. So that is something that I can revisit with them during my meeting with them this week to see if that's something they would still recommend. But that came directly from our public health authorities. Right, so the full day of cleaning, I mean, this is again, this is something where, you know, I can confer with Department of Health. I can ask for guidance from the county DOH, the state DOH, if this is something that we can relax. Strictly from a conventional wisdom standpoint and what we've seen, now that we've had custodians in the buildings, we found that the time in the afternoon seems to be adequate time for them to put in place their cleaning protocols. You know, with the weekend perhaps as an opportunity for the building to be lying fallow, if you will. So that's absolutely something and something we would obviously do if we went to Fridays, we would forego that. The Ms. Roar's question about kindergarten registration. I had a meeting this week to, you know, I think it's been a while since we've done a really a full audit of our registration department. And listen, that's not to say that the folks who are in there are not doing a good job. But registration is one of those departments where it doesn't tend to fall under the auspices of the jurisdiction of any particular administrator. Now, since I came in, you know, I've sort of assumed a part of that responsibility. But admittedly, being transparent, I've not really had an opportunity to conduct a full procedural audit of that office and understand how we can improve, how we can become more efficient, how we can put more of a critical eye on equity and understand that the barriers that certain families might face in terms of going and navigating that process. Ms. Roar, you're absolutely right. It's time for us to really take a look at that office and understand, not critically, but understand what additional resources can we deploy to that office? And supports can we employ to that office that can assist them in being more effective and efficient and inclusive in the way we're doing business. But I, you know, just a shout out to our registration office though, because it's been very difficult to do what's tended to be in-person registration. You know, they've been receiving people, you know, working with them in the foyer, really to limit the number of visitors that we have in the building. And, you know, they really have done, we have ways we can improve, but they've done a good job of keeping that moving. So, you know, so Mr. Kramer's remarks and certainly respect that position. And I would just say that, you know, that it's that I'm not approaching it from the place of protecting the adults, although obviously you never want to see people lose their jobs. But that's not driving the decision-making at this point in time. What's driving the decision-making is that having already cut $3 million, if we cut an additional $2 million, yes, it's going to be jobs. And it's not necessarily going to be classroom teachers. It's going to be all of those associated support staff. Because you can do that without impacting class size. So those are all the teachers that are not necessarily classroom teachers, but are delivering really critical services to more specialized populations at a time when they most need it. But that being said, this is a preliminary, it's not even the preliminary budget that's going to be approved on the 18th. It's a preliminary budget that's been forwarded to the board. And as we mentioned at the beginning, we're going to go through a series of interactive meetings and deliberative process this week, individual board members to ask questions and hearing this feedback and understand if the board is comfortable and would support what the administration has brought forward. So it's by no means a fait accompli. And certainly appreciate you bringing that perspective to bear. And I'm sure the board members would probably have some additional commentary on that as well. You know, relative to Mrs. Mordecai's comments. You know, I would suggest that, and no, these revisions are not going to appear online today. This was really just an informational report on the part of the superintendent. I would suggest that, you know, this budget process has probably been, and this is not in any way, shape or form a criticism to any processes previous to this. But I would just say that I would suggest that this budget process has probably been more transparent than any process at least that I participated in here or previously by virtue of the fact that we've hosted a budget town hall. We've had multiple public presentations about the board, about the budget. And, you know, this typically, in a typical year, the public does not really become really aware of what the thought process is until that preliminary budget is presented at the, you know, at that March meeting. Yes, there are public budget work sessions and to some extent, you're privy to those conversations. But we've been extremely transparent with the public relative to, you know, where we were at and the thought process and continue to do that. And that's kind of part and parcel of this report tonight. The restorative justice room was built. It was put in place, they continued to kind of refine that and enhance it. But that was put in place and was off to a great start. They were putting it to some really good use. The capital projects, what we've done is, is we've removed capital projects from the budget and we'll be using capital reserve to do those projects. And we're placing a critical eye not on frivolous projects, but projects that are very much connected to, you know, overall safety and health and safety of the school environment and the school buildings. You know, and the HVAC is actually not, I don't believe the HVAC is being funded out of that pot of money. I think we're going to be able to fund the HVAC remediations almost exclusively out of the S or two money, which we could not do out of S or one, but have been able to do through S or two. So we're not, that's actually one of the savings we realized in the local budget was by taking capital, using capital reserve for those projects. We gutted, completely zeroed out the capital projects budget in the local budget and moved it, going to be moving it out of capital reserve. So, interesting. We had a meeting with, I asked for, you know, we had multiple go-arounds with Hunterdon, which I was not involved in. And, you know, business office come back and say, they're not budgeting. It's 26%, they're inflexible on it. I said, all right, I said, let's schedule a meeting. I want to meet with them. And I really wanted to understand the historical perspective on Hunterdon. You know, all this talk about handshakes and this, that and the other thing. And the reality of it is, is that there's always been an annual contract there. But the way the business arrangement started was, it was sort of a, it was brokered because of a, really a collegial relationship that the superintendent had at the time with the Superintendent of Hunterdon Educational Services Commission. And West Orange was in a tough spot with their current vendor and they engaged in this partnership. I will tell you that the increases over the years have been relatively small. And in speaking with Hunterdon about that 2% over four years, they wanted to raise that over the course, over the life of that contract. They really needed to raise that over the life of the contract, but ultimately decided that they were going to respect and honor the contract as it had been originally brokered at 2% a year. And I said to them, and Ms. Flowers will tell you, I said, I really wish you hadn't been as accommodating over the years with the increases because it would make my life a lot easier this year. Because we are truly paying the piper for really subpar increases on the part of Hunterdon. 2% barely covered their expenses. In fact, it was not covering their expenses, which is part and parcel of the issue. So they were inflexible on that. Now, we did say to them, okay, well then we're married to you for one more year. We don't really have a choice at this point in time to go out for RFP for different transportation vendors. But that is absolutely, and they understand and they respect the fact that this summer we are going to begin to understand if we could enter into a more cost-effective relationship with another vendor other than Hunterdon. As far as the insurance plan. I mean, I do know that, and I might pass the ball to Ms. Flowers on this. I mean, I know that our current broker is always, you know, doing side-by-sides of the private plans with the state health plans, understanding that the collective bargaining agreement, and this kind of goes to one of Mr. Kramer's points. It prohibits us from putting in place a plan that is not of equal or greater value or benefit, benefits to the bargaining unit. So we're not able to do that. But I know they're always doing side-by-sides. Last year, Mr. Calavano did that. Initially, it looked like going into the state health benefits plan was going to realize the savings. But once our private provider realized that the state plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield was undercutting them, they actually came down and gave us a quote below. So typically, the private provider, if they know that they're going to be undercut by the state plan, they'll actually come and meet you where you need to be. But I don't know if you have any additional insight into that, Ms. Flowers? Okay, but I will tell you that it's been a number of years since we entered into this partnership with our current brokers, benefits broker. So we are due, we are due to shop around and understand if somebody can do better for us than they can. Absolutely. You know, so special ed runs, we did look at that. As far as, you know, we do believe that the rate that we're getting for the special ed, the special ed vans, special ed routes is competitive with Hunterdon. And what we have right now is we have, we have a lot of IEPs where there's been written into those IEPs door-to-door when door-to-door is not necessarily merited. And we have cases where it might be appropriate for the student to actually ride the gen ed bus. And in fact, that would be really a constructive step in the right direction for the special needs students and an aspect of inclusion, which would actually be benefit to them. But we've erred on the side of door-to-door routes. But many of those annual evaluations are done. It's already been written into the IEP. But I can tell you that that is something that we're looking at next year. And just to our special ed parents, we're not looking to unilaterally make decisions here, but rather to engage collaboratively with parents at the IEP meetings and say, you know, what would your thoughts be about maybe moving into a gen ed bus? You know, is that something where you feel like that could be a constructive move for your child? And enter into those conversations and win-win? Because those routes are what, $70,000, $80,000 apiece? So, you know, you have three or four parents that are on board with having their child move to a gen ed bus and you've saved the district $200,000. But it was not something that we were really able to get done. And we certainly were not going to, at this point in time, pull the rug out from underneath special needs parents and their kids relative to those buses. And I think as far as the special ed audit goes, you know, I will tell you that with a special ed population of approximately 1,300 students and fairly large caseloads for our case managers and balancing both the needs for being compliant with code-based timelines, but as importantly, you know, being able to go beyond simply just the compliance of paperwork and actually be able to expand upon that and to get into classrooms and be able to be proactively connecting with parents. It's the same thing with guidance counselors. Could we cut case managers? Could we cut child study team members? Sure, we could, just like we could cut guidance counselors and the caseload goes from X to Y and it becomes even less ideal than it already is. So I think as far as our child study team goes, we have a pretty well-functioning child study team. They're efficient, they're effective. We very rarely, if ever, don't meet timelines. And I know that those folks are strapped. I mean, they are working around the clock to get that stuff done. But regardless, Mrs. Mordecai, I will follow with Mrs. Gorgody. And you're right in that we probably are due to actually do a comprehensive special ed audit presentation for the public. And so I will speak with Mrs. Gorgody Fitzgerald about that. So let's see here. So Ms. Witzig's questions. No, the state hasn't given us any clear direction or mandates for the fall. But, so we don't know whether they will allow students to remain, to remain home, whether they'll allow school districts to continue to offer that option. I'm hypothesizing that that will be the case. I'm really just trying to predict the future and what the potential trajectory of this pandemic is and understand like, all right, like it'll probably be a lot better in September. But will it be completely back to normal? Probably not. So whether we're talking about medically fragile children or maybe we're talking about children who might have school phobias or whether we're talking about children who might reside with parents who are medically fragile. My thought on it is that we are going to have a percentage of children who may need to have that option offered to them. But that's just simply my hypothesis, my prediction. The state has not weighed in at all in terms of what the expectations would be for September. And we're certainly hopeful that that'll happen sooner rather than later. Great point. Love when a parent brings up a great point. Mrs. DeMendez is on the call. You know, this idea of not just addressing students who were falling behind, but what kinds of additional opportunities are we providing relative to enrichment? And students who may have been exceeding grade level, but are just on grade level and recognizing that as well. And I bet you, Mr. DeMendez, might have something to volunteer on that. Anything, Mr. DeMendez, anything come out of your team planning? And some of the things that went into the 22nd about not just addressing learning loss, but also acceleration? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So actually, we began our February 22nd session with three different groups of students. We looked at our data, our student performance in terms of students that were, yes, showing some learning gaps, students who were faring well, they were doing just about the same as they were, whether, you know, when they were in school and they're doing the same now, they're maintaining the course. And then students were excelling, students were flourishing independently actually, and that it's really working for them. And so then teachers went through their student list, they went through data, they explored that, began to unpack where the students fell. And we're now planning a formal curriculum plan and instructional scaffolding of prerequisite knowledge and/or enrichment activities so that we can think about our curriculum for the following year and where we're going to build those things directly into our curriculum and into our lesson planning for the three groups of students. In addition, we're thinking about our summer. What are the things that we're going to do in the summer to extend learning? And we're thinking about how do we address that now in the months that we have left? So the team is looking by each content area and by grade level at the elementary level on how we can address all three groups of students to include our enrichment, our independent learners, students who are definitely flourishing, working in a virtual environment.
All right, Ms. DeMendez, thank you. And I don't want to, to get ahead of ourselves here, but you know, it just, when you were talking about that, it just, you know, the update to the elementary report card, which is going to be communicated shortly. It just came to mind and the fact that, you know, we have built in an exceeds expectations category into that report card so that, you know, parents, guardians and caretakers would understand the extent to which the child was really performing above grade level.
Sure, so in our report card, K through five, which parents will expect? You'll receive a letter tomorrow that will show the new instructional key to include exceeds. Exceeds has been integrated into all of the content area standards for the report card. Our teachers also have that instructional key. They're working toward that end to provide our parents for the second trimester with that report card on March 25th. That's the date that it will be published after 3:00 PM. And our marking period, our trimester ends on the 22nd. And yes, those revisions were made for all content areas.
Thank you, Ms. DeMendez. And, and just wanted to, so, so a couple other, other thoughts here and some questions. And I know Ms. Mrs. Roro had, had a, a comment about HVAC and I know Ms. Whitze is well. So, so one of the benefits of some of the remediations we've done is that previously, and particularly in our elementary schools, we had non-functioning dampers. Okay, we also had faulty thermostats, which is what, which led to rooms becoming, you know, overly hot. Because you had the thermostat not controlling the temperature of the heat. And then you had a damper that was not opening, allowing fresh air to come in and to balance out the temperature in the room. So one of the benefits now of, of having those dampers open is that there's constantly fresh air coming into the room. The heat at, at a certain point in time, and I'm not exactly sure when, but at a certain point in time, the heat will be turned off. So there will no longer be heat coming out of those blowers. There'll just be fresh air that's coming in constantly. And yeah, the, you know, my understanding is that, you know, is that air conditioners are, and I don't want to, I don't want to, I might be out of my depth here. But I think typically air conditioners, you know, at least window units are not meant to be used, but we can look into that. And we'd have to monitor that. We'd have to understand, you know, the, the conditions in the rooms. And, you know, there have been times where we've had to call you know, early dismissals or, you know, because the temperatures in the rooms were, you know, were, you know, were too high. But, you know, in terms of what we've done from an HVAC standpoint, basically what we've insured in each space is that we have adequate fresh air. Presently, we have about five spaces in the district where we have blowers which have gone. They, they're, they're no longer functions, they need to be sent out. In those rooms, we have heat and we have a freestanding ionization device in the room. And we're utilizing the international building code formula for window aperture. So international building code, in order for windows to bring in adequate ventilation, the window aperture needs to be four percent of the total square footage of the floor. And so we've gone into every room presently that has a non-functioning blower. And by the way, the timeline for the installation of the rebuilt blowers is really kind of in any day kind of thing. But in all those rooms, in any room that does not have adequate window aperture has been taken offline. And presently, there was real one classroom in the high school that I'm aware of, that I think had about two point seven percent window aperture. And we took it offline because it technically was not aligned with that code. What we're doing in terms of remediations over the summer is, and what we've been doing even up to this point is we're automating all of the mechanical unit vents so that they have brains, meaning that they modulate, the dampers will modulate automatically with the thermostat and sensing the temperature coming in from the outside. We're also installing new mechanical ventilation units in all the spaces that don't have them. And we haven't priced that out yet, but my, my thought would be that we would go with heating and air conditioning mechanical units in those spaces. Final piece, in case you haven't heard enough about HVAC yet, is, you know, when we talk about the the, the replacement of the updating of all of these units, that, that's a bond. That, that's a referendum. And, you know, considering we're talking about fiscal, you know, prudence and things of that nature. At what point in time the board, originally we were planning on going out, we had budgeted in for a referendum for the spring. We removed the costs of that referendum from the budget of eighty thousand dollars because we've done enough and will continue to do enough over the course of the summer, where we're actually in a place where it's not, where it's not absolutely critical for us to do that. But at some point in time, within the next several years, this community, this district will need to look at going out for a bond. Anywhere between ten and twenty million dollars to really do the necessary updating of those, of all those mechanical units. And people have asked me, well, how is this district and that district? How are they able to be in? Plain and simple. Livingston has all updated HVAC. I'm not exactly sure when they did it. But relatively recently, certainly within the last five maximum of ten years, they modernized their HVAC systems. And I've talked to superintendents Glen Ridge as well, other than the high school, which they had some difficulties with. And I've talked to these superintendents and they said, if we hadn't done these HVACs, we'd, we'd been in the same boat as you and other districts which have still not been able to get in. But we are, you know, we, we're aligned and our buildings and ground staff has done a, a fantastic job of, of getting our, our, our rooms ready to go. Just seeing if I had left anything out here. Right. So the timeline for the budget is, is this. So, so we did a preliminary presentation for the, for the public on February twenty second. We've now, with the state aid, aid numbers in, we've now presented a, a proposed budget to the board. The, over the course of this week, there will be an interactive process with board members, not the full board, not a quorum. But with the board for they, for them to ask questions, they obviously heard feedback tonight from community members and go back into deliberation as to, are they comfortable with where the administration has come in, do they want us to come down? And ultimately, we will engage in that interactive process and come back to the table at a board meeting on March eighteenth. Which that board meeting is, is scheduled specifically and dedicated to the presentation of the preliminary budget to the board for their, their voting, for their approval, which would then subsequently go to the county, I miss flowers for the county's approval. Now, talk to me, talk to the public about, so it's preliminary. And then there can continue to be adjustments made to the, but talk to us a little bit about what, what that might look like, what, what that could be. And then ultimately, when the final budget gets approved.
Sure. So the March eighteenth meeting will do the presentation, which is a preliminary budget to be approved by the Board of Education and then forward it to the county for approval. Once we get the county approved budget back, they need to, the county will get it back to us by April twentieth. And then after that, we'll have our public hearing on May seventh. That's to present the final budget that was approved by county. And at that point, depending on whether or not the budget is approved, if it's not approved, and we need to go back and make some tweaks or changes, we do have seven days after that. So we have the April twentieth, let me, let me rewind, March eighteenth. Ten of the budget goes to county to be approved by April twentieth. And then that budget will come back, we'll work on and have the public hearing on May seventh. And at the May seventh meeting, that is when the budget will be approved or changes made. And then we have, if changes are made, we do have another seven days after that to adopt the final budget. The final budget has to be adopted by the May fourteenth date. Statutorily, that's the last day that we could adopt the final budget.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. And, and, and listen, I mean, there's, you know, look at benefits, for example, like the benefits increases is still an estimate. Right? I mean, any, any, Ms. Flowers, any idea of when they typically lock that percentage in?
No, at this point, we did get confirmation that the estimate, the projection that they gave us is
Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So there's, there won't be any
There won't be any will from there.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Flowers. And I believe, I do believe that, let me just make sure here. I think that, that covers it, Mr. Trickls.
You did a phenomenal job, Dr. Kasko, and it's just one little one.
There's the elementary school principal.
Okay, Ms. Rora asked about pre-K.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes. So, so first of all, I want to thank Ms. Roro. Has been a great partner on this, has forwarded some really helpful information to me. Namely, a contact in the Raway School District, the superintendent there. So I'm going to be reaching out to to that superintendent to, to really just have an informational meeting, informational interview to kind of pick her brain. And from what I understand, there, there's money on the table. And then so that, you know, districts that, that didn't, that, that didn't get the bite of the apple in the fall are going to have another opportunity. So actually, I'm excited because sort of kind of put together a little kind of school district community partnership here. Just to bring people together who have been researching this and in, in the immediate term. And we're going to go after it. So we're going to see what, what, what the ask is from the state, what we need to present. And, you know, though we may not be able within this short period of time, be able to implement some, the grand scheme. We certainly, I, I, I would think would be able to kind of get some resources and some, some services in place. So I'm actually really excited by the fact that we didn't necessarily miss that. So more, more forthcoming on that.
Great, thank you, thank you. You were like ninety nine point nine percent.
Yeah, I'm going to die. I'll take, I'll take it. Well, I just did the retake. I get extra credit. Now I'm at a hundred. All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Trickls.
Great. There are just a couple of items I would just like to, to address, and one is to Ms. Rora about kindergarten registration. I had just had a conversation with Dr. Kasko and talking about how kindergartners are our newest clients, our newest customers. Their first introduction to the school district is through registration. And so many companies, corporate, every, everywhere you look, we do surveys. And I think it would be an excellent idea, just throwing it out there, to ask our, our kindergarten parents, so how was the process? How can we make it easier? How can we make it more fluid for you? So for you to have mentioned that was, was right on time. And the other for Ms. Mordecai, I do believe that the board is going to look at a number of contracts and, and possibly go out for RFPs in a number of areas during the course of this next year. So now we're going to move on to reports. Board members, are you following? All right. So we're going to take a look at personnel. Registration and retirements, and we do have two retirements. So congratulations and best wishes to Ms. Lynn Steinberg. Who is retiring after twenty years and she's currently a math teacher at the high school. And also to Mr. William Urbansky after thirty-four years. And he is currently at the high school teaching P E, health and driver's ed. So we wish all the best to the retirees and remember that's where every day is Saturday. It's a wonderful place to be.
Unless you join the board.
Unless you're on the Board of Education. But welcome to the wonderful world. All right. So may I have a motion for personnel items, one resignations and retirements. A and B, recisions, number two, three appointments, A through H, which is also attachment number two. Item E is attachment two. Leaves of absence, number four. Transfers, number five. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay.
Everyone else.
We want to duke it out? Was that you, Ms. Werta?
I'll stand down.
Okay, Ms. Werta, thank you. All right. Okay, and discussion on these items?
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Urbansky. He was not only a teacher at the high school, but he also coached several of our programs in town. So baseball, bowling, so just congratulations on your retirement. I know the community thanks you for your years of service.
Any further discussion, Mr. Rothstein?
Oh, yeah, just also the retirements of non-certificated staff. Wanted to note this as well.
I recognize those.
Ah, yes, congratulations to Michelle Carroll and John, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but DeMinnit. Congratulations.
Thank you and congratulations to all. Any other comments? Vote, please, Ms. Flowers.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Werta?
Yes.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trickls?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And B, curriculum and instruction. And one is attachment number three. Two is attachment number four. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Trickls might just
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Kasko.
And I, I just thought I would mention, since we've, we've been having a lot of conversation about how we've been addressing, you know, kind of gaps and things, learning loss, things of that nature. You'll notice we have yet another grant-funded academic support program this time for specifically through English language learners at the middle schools. And you, and you, you'll remember that this is one of a number of programs that we've, you know, and, and I want to, you know, commend Mr. Plata and also Ms. Granato for getting a lot of mileage out of not only the, the S R grant, but also out of the E S S A grant. We have a lot of really good, albeit in virtual, after-school support programs. And not only for students, but also for parents. So I, I just want to note that, that not only through the good efforts of our teachers on a daily basis, but also some of our supplemental programming, we've been placing an eye on that throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, indeed. Wonderful opportunities for our students. All right, let's take a look at finance and I'm going to separate that. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, vote. Ms. Werta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
And President Trickls?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to separate finance into A, special services. Items one and two. Is there a motion? Finance A, special services?
Yes, moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Flowers, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Welta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trickls?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and wrapping it up, finance B, business office. And we have items one, two, three, and four, and would like to recognize a couple of donations that we have. Both to the high school, one from the Rotary Club for five hundred dollars and the second from the Nikhil Budlani Foundation, two thousand dollars for the high school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Alrighty, Ms. Flowers.
Mrs. Welta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein? Vice President Tunnycliff?
Yes.
President Trickls? Thank you.
And now we are up to item eleven, petitions and hearings of citizens. So Ms. Gravteza, would you please do the honors for us?
Thank you. And yes, this is now the time for the petitions and hearings from citizens about any issue that you'd like to speak about. It's just use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And Katie Whitze, if you can please follow the prompt again on your screen and give us your name and address one more time.
So Katie Whitze, forty-nine Manga Road. So I have one more question for you that wasn't on the agenda earlier. So when my son started at Mount Pleasant in kindergarten, there was talk about a man trap being put in the school. And the running joke in kindergarten, first grade, that I would say at board meetings was, do you think it'll get done before my child graduates fifth grade? And everybody would laugh. My child is graduating fifth grade this year. We still have no working man trap at Mount Pleasant. So my question is, I know Bob's thinking he's not here anymore, but my question is, is there any plan to finish this project? And we're pushing six years that they've been working on this. So I, I just want to point that out that that is a work in progress that has never been completed. And while when he was in first grade, we were joking that it would never be done. But I never thought by fifth grade that we'd still be having this as be an open item. So. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Patricia Gomez. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen. And give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Patricia Gomez, 29 Kensteras. Redwood School, it was built in 1956, and it still has the electrica from that era. When the two new aisles were built in the 80s, unfortunately, they continued the electrica from the 50s into the new sections. So you have a very long school that it doesn't have air conditioners in the windows. We have one air conditioner per grade, that is where the inclusion classes go. But in September, you might have students fainting and trying to learn in 95 degrees inside the classrooms without air conditioning. This is something that for the past 10 years, we have been talking with Mr. Siggy. And congratulations that he retired, but now we are wondering what's going to happen with our kids? When is this going to be fixed? Or at least start the process for Redwood? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And at this time, I'd ask anyone else if they'd like to speak. Use the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. Hey, thank you, Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, hi, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Alleyway. I just had to add on something because I ran out of time. Does the board plan to refinance the existing debt? The current bond debt for the district is 50 million. Just wondering if you'll be refinancing that this year, as interest rates are very low. And also, in the beginning, some of the things I didn't hear, I heard you mention something about vaccination clinic. Substitute reached out to me to ask if the district was going to collaborate with CVS or the county to provide vaccinations for staff. And my last comment, Bellevue has an Amistad Complaints Coordinator. Is West Orange going to consider that, or has that job been already assigned to someone? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And again, a final call for anyone who would like to speak. It's the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, that seems about it, thank you, Madam President.
Alrighty, again, thank you everyone for your questions. And Dr. Kasko?
Alrighty, thank you, President Trick Scales. So I have good news and bad news for Mrs. Witzig. The good news is, is that it's happening this summer. The bad news is your son will have already graduated. But all kidding aside, we actually have been in the process of, through our COPS grant funding, been doing security upgrades throughout the district. One of the upgrades in particular that was done to Mount Pleasant School in addition to some other schools was basically the replacement of doors to make them basically secure. That doors that are not, you know, painted window glass that can be locked, you know, that are good solid wood doors, that was part of our COPS grant. We've also installed ballistic film and things of that nature. What's held up, the finishing of the man trap project, is that we've had, we've been waiting on the state to award us the Alyssa's grant, Alyssa's Law money. When we upgrade all of our buildings to be in alignment with Alyssa's Law, which essentially means like you have to have a school-wide emergency notification alarm or something, something to that effect. We're planning on doing all that work at the same time. So we're going to finish our man traps, the visitor ID systems. We're going to install all of our integrated alarm systems for Alyssa's Law. And what I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation was one of the expenses that we're incurring in next year's budget is about $157,000, which will be the additional that's not covered either through what's left in the COPS grant, as well as the state Alyssa's Laws grant. And so I can assure you that the timeline for the completion of all the man traps and all the visitor ID systems is actually going to be this summer, and they'll be ready to go in September. So I'm happy to report that, but obviously dismayed that it's taken this long to do that. You know, as far as the air conditioning piece goes, one of the challenges is, you know, in installing a- and we don't install window units in every classroom, because you're right in the standpoint, Ms. Gomez, that that would overload the electrical panel. Our schools are not designed to handle having a window AC in every single classroom. The solution, and this was part of the original, the $54 million referendum that the board had originally quoted out prior to when I got here, that's the kind of price tag. Now, there were other things in that, but when we talk about air conditioning pretty much all the spaces in the school district, you're talking about a price tag of about, and that referendum included about $8 or $9 million in roofs and a few other things. I think the HVAC was about $35 million. So to do a full-blown HVAC modernization of the district, you're talking about $35 million. And there are variations of that, you know, in terms of how much would need to be spent. So, you know, in the interim, you know, we, there's, you know, we have to, you know, water breaks. Obviously, if the temperature in the classroom is, this year in September was relatively mild. Fortunately, you know, the warm weather doesn't last very long. Next school year, because of the way the calendar starts, we start a little bit later in the school year. So I'm hopeful that starting a little bit later will avoid some of the hottest days. But as I said in my report, this board, this district, this community is going to have to confront, in particular, the HVAC modernization needs and determine at what point in time they're prepared to shoulder the burden of a, you know, a fairly sizable referendum. And finally, Mrs. Mordecai, yes, I had mentioned that we are actually part, my understanding in speaking with the mayor and the Department of Health is that they can commandeer doses directly from the county, and we could become a vaccination site, and that would only be for staff. And we're looking at this week in surveying the staff and how many staff members would be interested in participating in that. And the mayor and Department of Health are very confident that we'll be able to secure those doses and administer the vaccines to any staff members who would need them. Obviously, if it were either the Moderna or the Pfizer, it would have to be two separate dates. So that's how that would play out. So we're very optimistic that we should have some further news on that. And the budget which has been proposed to the board does actually contain a Director of Diversity and Equity that would be responsible for that amongst many other things. Whether or not ultimately in the final calculations and back and forth, we're able to sustain that position, the budget does propose that position for next year. And that is all I have, Mr. Trick Scales.
Okay, we just have one little one, Dr. Kasko.
Oh, it is. I did, you know, I, just so you know, I intentionally leave things out.
I know you do, I know you do.
It's got like Ms. Gravteza.
So which one was it? Here's the test.
You can leave me out of this, Dr. Kasko.
I don't know, you know, I don't see it.
The refinancing.
Oh, yes, I conveniently forgot to, because I was going to lateral that to Ms. Flowers. Didn't we not refinance our debt last year? I think we might have redone, might have done that last year. But I guess we're not precluded from doing it again, right? I mean, depending if the rates are more competitive, so.
Thank you, so we thank Ms. Mordecai for that suggestion.
We did, right? Yeah, so.
Alright, so we are now up to board reports. And so we will, as per usual, start with Ms. Huerta.
Thank you, President Terry Trick Scales. Just very quickly, wanted to say Happy International Women's Day to all of the ladies in the room, you know, and I know you did say it.
First thing I said.
First thing that you did say.
I have three daughters, I'm a big fan of women. My daddy's-
So just, you know, I want to give a quick shout out to our local ladies in West Orange. We have a lot of very active women in our community with the Council of PTAs, our local PTA leadership, our town council is a majority women's board this year. And there's just so many women in our town in particular that me personally, growing up and seeing that, has inspired me in, you know, being able to do the things that I do as a mom. I did want to shout out, there is a local mother in town who has a nonprofit organization, grassroots organization, and she has a new book out that I'm eager to read as well. She has a wonderful daughter that's also doing the bookmarks, and congratulations to her, because I think that she's a very great role model for our young students and that you don't have to wait until you grow up or get older to be, you know, change makers. And you don't have to be a man, that was very much, I guess, I don't know if it embedded in me, but I felt like I was in a, I was just a little girl in a man's world, really. So, you know, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, everybody that was participating. And really, the community participation and the community feedback is what I like to listen to and be, you know, happy that I'm here for it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta, Ms. Merklinger?
Sure, thank you. So yes, I echo Happy International Women's Day. Most of you know I went to an all-girls Catholic high school, so that has been ingrained in me for quite some time about how powerful women can be in leadership roles. So definitely happy to be in a community that supports so many women. But also want to recognize our students. So Julian Carraba from our soccer team, accepted, was accepted to TCNJ, where he will continue his athletic and academic career in soccer. Our parent community, so our whole entire West Orange community is involved in Adopt a Senior 2021. So just want to shout out to those parents that coordinate that and all the community members that have adopted seniors. I think the gifts are already flowing in and seeing so many thank yous from our seniors. It's really great to see that community effort and coming together. If you are a senior and you haven't posted your stuff to the Facebook page, please do so. There are many community members that want to adopt you and help you get ready for college. And then we do, we do have, coming up in April, our West Orange High School, the shows must go on. Tickets are on sale, I believe, at this time. You do have to purchase them ahead of time because of COVID. And so there is limited space, but there are two dates, three shows, April 23rd and 24th, and they will be held at the Ospac. So definitely go on to the Board of Ed website. It's under www.woboe.org/cetheshows. And your tickets can be purchased there ahead of time. And then I just want to shout out to our cheerleading team. They had their banquet yesterday, and it was beautiful just to be able to have some normalcy for our seniors. It was socially distanced, everyone was wearing masks. The slideshow that was shown was great, and just congratulations to, I think there were 16 seniors that are graduating from that program, and many of them came up, started cheerleading at the age of eight in the PAL program. So congratulations to those folks, to the coaches, and all the upcoming freshmen and JV squads. We have great expectations of you, so it was really nice then, and I'm glad we got to have that for you. And that's it.
Thank you so much, Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you very much. Okay, so a couple of things. I'm part of the Sustainability, the Sustainable New Jersey for Schools group, and we have an internal group here that's a collaborative group that's cross-functional. We have some town council members on it, there's students, there's faculty. And we had a meeting this week and talked about getting the first bronze level for our schools and what that requires. And one of those things is a new policy, and I'm looking at my colleagues over there, Cheryl and Ms. Merklinger and Mr. Rothstein. So we did get a policy, and I had some policies forwarded to me from a former board member that was from New Jersey School Boards that was looked at a couple of years ago. So we'll add that to our list of policies as we go through the next couple, because that is one of the benchmarks that we will need in order to get this designation as a bronze level for green schools. So and then on Saturday, I participated in the New Jersey School Boards Legislative Day. There were about 90 different schools represented across the state of New Jersey, and we had Senator Vin Gopal speak to us and kind of give some highlights, which I'll give you a little update now. We talked about a lot of different things, and they kind of reviewed all of the federal funding that's coming out of Washington, and talked about, there's about 578 million additional state aid that's coming towards the schools this year. They brought back the 2020 increases, as we've mentioned, and there's additional money added in most folks' budgets, so that it's a full funding of formula for 2025, as we work towards the full funding of the formula for 2025. And there's also, for the first time since 1996, a full pension payment that's going to be made, which is super exciting. As I mentioned, the federal level, we're looking at about $130 billion for schools this year, and that's about 10 times what New Jersey received last spring, so that's certainly welcomed. They did talk about the testing waiver. As you know, New Jersey had sent, had applied, the governor's office applied for this. It was submitted, we then heard after the fact that the US Department of Education sent a memo saying that they are not going to be giving blanket waivers. However, they are going to be taking this on a case-by-case basis. From what I understand from this meeting, there were only about 10 states that submitted waivers. So we are still waiting to hear from the feds of whether this waiver will be granted for us. They do have 120 days from the time the waiver was submitted, and my understanding is they are expediting this process. So stay tuned for more info on that. We also talked a little bit about the special ed bill that is in the Senate, it's 3434. It was heard in committee. Couple of things about this that I wanted to note that, excuse me, the bill requires the Board of Education to temporarily provide special education and related services to students who exceed or will exceed the current age of eligibility for special education. And one of the things that this bill does is that it kind of supplants the CST decision and allows parents to make a decision about what their child needs. And from, there's a couple of things that I know New Jersey School Boards was a little bit concerned about, because, one, from a budget perspective, how many students would this affect? And how would that impact our budget for the coming year? So certainly, there's some financial impacts. And the other piece is that they're kind of establishing a blanket for the program. And the other concern was that it's, you know, your IEP is an individualized educational plan. So that sort of takes that piece of it out of there. So we're going to be, like I said, it's just in the Senate right now. We're looking to see where that goes. However, the Department of Education has issued a memo regarding compensatory education during COVID, and they're also encouraging boards to to write a resolution and send it in down to Governor Murphy. So we'll see where that goes. And we also talked a little bit about the decriminalization of marijuana bill and how that impacts schools, the concerns across- The concerns across the school boards were really that the under eighteen, age of eighteen clause that's currently in that legislation is that if you're under eighteen for a first-time offense, that you could still, you would not have to notify the parents. So they're looking at correcting that piece of it. And there's a lot of great things in that bill in terms of social justice, but I think there's a couple of things that they want to clean up, and they definitely have their eye on that to make some of those changes. And let's see, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is the Chapter Forty Four relief. This is, has to do with the healthcare benefits for the state healthcare plan. You know, West Orange is not part of the plan, but it does, the idea with this bill when it was passed was that it would lower the insurance rates for the districts. However, what they've, school boards has heard from many, many districts is that that has had the reverse effect of what it was intended to do. So they are going back in and going to try to look at this bill again and see what they can do to, to clean it up so that it's not negatively impacting the school's budgets. So and I think, I think that was all of the key points that I wanted to say. And I did also just want to make a note that I know everybody's super excited because we're getting vaccines, and a lot of people, you know, from listening to the governor's call, press conference today, he was saying that, you know, we've really ramped up, and now we have two point five million people in New Jersey who have received the vaccine. And we went from, you know, really almost a month to get up to a million vaccines, another three weeks to hit two million, and then within seven days, we had another five hundred thousand. So it's looking really good as long as we continue to receive the vaccines. It looks good to be able to stay on target for his benchmarks. But I do want to say that there's still a lot of unknown about the vaccine. So while we are talking about, you know, how do we open up? How do we open up safely? You know, there is some data coming out of, starting to be, coming out of Europe right now about the efficacy of the vaccine. So there's still that big unknown about how long is it going to last? Is it going to need another, you know, do we need to get re-vaccinated every six months? What, you know, what is the timeline for that? So some of those things, we still don't know. So I just wanted to remind everybody that this is still a novel virus and that we are still dealing with a lot of issues around controlling it. And as excited as we all are about getting the vaccine and getting our kids back into school, you know, there's still some things that we, we need to understand. So be patient with us as we forge our way through this. So, and I think that is all for me. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. And we're really fortunate that West Orange was asked to participate at the state level with the Legislative Committee. So we have a lot of information right off the press. So that's great. Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Tony Cliff, thank you so much for mentioning the sustainability policy. For those of you keeping track, we're making progress toward adopting a full slate of policies by the end of June this year. And so thank you so much for adding one more to the list. I really am so grateful. But yeah, just very, very briefly, we are making progress. The board is working, we're, we're, we're going to hit that goal. So we will accomplish that. A couple of events that I wanted to mention, two from the past and one for tomorrow. There was a program that I attended, I don't recall the exact date, it was a couple of weeks ago, on underage drinking, and it was really a terrific program, really grateful that that was made available to parents in the district. Also, the choir concert was really just such, such a delight. And it's one of those, one of those programs that, you know, you talk about making lemonade out of lemons. If it weren't for this whole virtual environment that we're in, I wouldn't have been able to see choirs from so many different schools in the district perform. And they were terrific. And it's not, it wasn't just they were terrific for virtual, they were terrific. It was such a great program, including, of course, one of the highlights, Dr. Cascone, with your, with your solo. Very, I'm humbled. So kudos to our arts program again for just turning out such amazing work and great programs for our community. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention was tomorrow, I believe Ms. Tuna Cliff is also joining along with me, our second-year training from the New Jersey School Board Association and Finance. So we'll emerge from that programming experts and prepared to handle the budget completely effectively. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. I tell you, our superintendent is just a Renaissance man. I mean, he, he's an engineer now, I just listening to him, you know? He sings, he's fluent in Espanol, and dance. I keep saying, I'm waiting to catch him on the dance floor. That's, that's next. So yes, kudos to our students who did a phenomenal job. I would just like to wrap up by sending a special thank you to Assemblyman John McKinnon and Assemblywoman Myla Jacey and Senator Cody for their unwavering support for our school district. And we know that they individually and collectively fight for us all the time. And we know that they had a lot to do with the funding that we received this year. So just a formal thank you from the board, from the bottom of our pocketbooks. We, we appreciate everything that you do for us all the time. Negotiations, we're hot and heavy. We've got all three associations all up in the air. Ms. Tony Cliff and I have spent hours together, and we have hours to go. And so just wanted to let everyone know that we are in full swing with all three associations. As we get our students back into the school, our teachers back into the school, it's natural that we would think about board meetings, going from virtual to in-person at some point in time. So I'm going to suggest that the board leadership entertain some conversations with the administration soon and talk about what that would look like. It will certainly not provide the opportunity to the public that we have in a virtual setting where you are able to zoom in. But these are topics that we need to bring up. It's going to entail topics about the physical plant as well as the technical piece of it. And with everything else, it's, it's all about safety. So I just wanted to alert the public that those conversations are going to be held very soon. Ms. Tony Cliff touched on the New Jersey School Board and their support for the waiver. We were going to write a letter, because as a board, we support our students, and we did not believe that an assessment at this point in time would be good for our students or for our staff. But we are in a wait-and-see mode now, because it may not be a waiver, but it may be a request for a postponement or an alternate assessment. So that's where we are at this point in time. And yes, I have to say, all the dynamic females, Women's International Day, it's Girls Rock, Women Rock. And I wanted to just talk about our own Marley Dias, who is the, she's the ambassador for the Nation, for National Education Association, for Read Across America. I mean, it doesn't get any better than that, our own Marley. So just wanted to give her a shout out, and I think everyone knows that she's been nominated for an NAACP Image Award for her work on Netflix and her, and her undying passion and devotion to girls and literature. And so that's just a wonderful thing. And she's right here at West Orange, you know, we, we claim her, we support her. All right, and I think we are at the end of our meeting. And so if I might get a, we have our next board meeting, which is held on Thursday, March eighteenth, and that will be our budget presentation. And at this point in time, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
I motion.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta, is there a second?
Second.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty now, okay. So thank you and good evening to everyone, and enjoy the rest of this week. It's supposed to be like spring.
Thank you. And this is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, I'll end for those both on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza.
Thank you.